Twenty-three meeting is now called to order. We will have invocation by yours truly, pledge of allegiance by Councilwoman Washington, Eli, and we all stand for invocation. Let us pray. Dear God, we're always appreciative of an opportunity to have another chance at life. There are some people who we're not able to see this week. Certainly, we don't take that fact for granted. We pause also to celebrate the many achievements of women during Women's History Month 2023. We not only reflect on their achievements, but the fact of their being, as none of us will be here today without the perseverance of a woman. Also, allow us as city leaders to execute the city's business in a way that is professional, considerate, and beneficial to the residents of this great place. In your son Jesus' name, we do pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Thank you, Councilwoman Washington, Eli, for the pledge. Next item is the reading and approval of the minutes from our February twenty-seventh, two thousand twenty-three meeting.
May I make a motion that we dispense with the reading of the minutes of February twenty-seven? Would they be approved? No corrections?
Second.
Motion has been made and seconded to dispense with the reading of the minutes and approve them as they have been received. Counsel comments or questions about that motion? Public comments or questions about that particular motion? CNN, Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Peaty?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. Next item is a proclamation. It's number eighteen of two thousand twenty-three. Councilman Harrington.
Resolution eighteen of two thousand twenty-three is a proclamation declaring the month of March as Women's History Month in the City of Natchitoches. Whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background have made historic contributions to the growth and strength of our nation in countless recorded and unrecorded ways. And whereas, American women have played and continue to play critical economic, cultural, and social role in every sphere of the life of the nation by constituting a significant portion of the labor force working inside and outside the home. And whereas, American women were particularly important in the establishment of early charitable, philanthropic, and cultural institutions in our nation. And whereas, American women of every race, class, and ethnic background served as early leaders in the forefront of every major progressive social change movement. And whereas, American women have served our country courageously in the military. And whereas, American women have been leaders, not only in securing their own rights of suffrage and equal opportunity, but also in the abolitions, abolitions movement, the emancipation movement, the industrial labor movement, the civil rights movement, and other movements, especially the peace movement, which created an impartial and just society for all. And whereas, despite the contributions, the role of American women in history has been consistently overlooked and undervalued in the literature teaching and study of American history. Now, therefore, I, Mayor Ronnie Williams, Jr., of the City of Natchitoches, hereby proclaim that March is designated as Women's History Month in the City of Natchitoches. And I call upon all citizens to observe this month and to invite all citizens to visit women'shistorymonth.gov to learn more about the vital contribution of women to our nation's history. I move to adopt resolution eighteen of two thousand twenty-three.
I second.
All right. Motion been made and seconded. I think really some notable words in that particular proclamation, understanding again the impact of women in many different areas of life. Certainly, all of us wouldn't be here, as I stated in the prayer, but should be appreciative of the work, the resilience, perseverance of women. And I know many of us can think about the women who have had an impact on our lives personally. I did ask the Councilwoman at large to select somebody to be honored, and I was thoroughly surprised that she selected Ms. Elnora Robertson, who is with us here today. Good to see you. I heard of Ms. Robertson's achievements, her life's work, especially in terms of educating youth for many years, and really appreciative of all the work that you have done. And even, even work in terms of integration of schools here. So again, grateful for that. I don't know, Councilwoman at large, if there's something you'd like to say. We are gonna do a photo in just a minute. But again, welcome to the city council meeting. Glad you're here, Ms. Robertson.
Yeah. Yes, I want to say thank you, Ms. Robertson, for coming, here to accept this proclamation today. I just want to say a few words about Ms. Robertson as she comes up to the podium. She was recently honored by the Concerned Citizens Association of Natchitoches. She is a civil rights activist and the first black female here in Natchitoches who in the nineteen-sixties signed a federal lawsuit to desegregate the Natchitoches Parish Public Schools. And during that time, it was unpopular and also very unsafe for a woman or anyone at that time to take on such a challenge. Needless to say, this lawsuit was successful, and it resulted in the merging of the all-black Central High School and the all-white Natchitoches High School becoming what is known now as Natchitoches Central High School. And because of this courageous action, I think this noble lady, looking at her, she's ninety years old, but she's, she's still vibrant and getting around, want to actually come up to the podium and accept this proclamation. On behalf of the City of Natchitoches.
Living legend right there, folks.
Really.
All right. Next item on the agenda is for introduction. It recently went to planning and zoning. Oh, we need, um, thank you so much. Thank you, Stacy, for reminding me that. All right. We, we did present her the proclamation, but we actually need to do a roll call vote on it. Any comments, questions, counsel? Public comments or questions about the proclamation? Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Peaty?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. All right. Next, we have item number seventeen of two thousand twenty-three, and that's Councilman Nielsen.
Living legend right there, folks.
Really.
All right. Next item on the agenda is for introduction. It recently went to planning and zoning. Oh, we need, um, thank you so much. Thank you, Stacy, for reminding me that. All right. We, we did present her the proclamation, but we actually need to do a roll call vote on it. Any comments, questions, counsel? Public comments or questions about the proclamation? Mrs. Stacy, roll call vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
Peaty?
Yes.
All right. That motion carries. All right. Next, we have item number seventeen of two thousand twenty-three, and that's Councilman Nielsen.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number seventeen of two thousand twenty-three, an ordinance amending ordinance number sixty-four of two thousand one by changing zoning classification of property described as follows. Lots one and two at northeast corner of Texas Street and Fourth Street. Physical address three twelve Texas Street. Whereas, Planning and Zoning Commission of the City of Natchitoches State of Louisiana has recommended at their meeting on March seven, two thousand twenty-three, that the application of Gray Lou Ventures LLC to rezone the property described above from B-two commercials to B-three with additional BA zoning to operate a cigar lounge/restaurant with alcohol consumption on premises three twelve Texas Street. And that's for introduction.
All right. We do have a picture of the building and that we're speaking about just for visual perspective, although the building is undergoing some pretty extensive renovations and doesn't look like the picture we see currently, which is certainly gray. We do know, again, that this was at the planning and zoning meeting on the seventh. Certainly, this is Gray Lou Ventures with Ms. Nicole Gray, also Mr. Mark Lewis, who has been here in the past, but is not with us today. I don't know, Nicole, is there anything to really say at this point?
You guys have questions? I'm happy to have a question.
Any council member have any questions? Nicole, please.
Looking great.
Looking good.
Yep. Look, I remember walking to the Lundemack. It doesn't look like the Lundemack anymore.
It's extensive, but it's looking great.
Looks good.
Got Texas Street looking good.
Yeah.
Looking great from the outside, looking great from the inside as well for those who have seen it so far. So I think it's pretty self-explanatory, and again, it was approved on the seventh. So just up for introduction today, before we move forward, Shontrell, there's no vote today happening, but any other thing maybe I'm missing or didn't say?
No, sir. They were compliant with everything.
I have a question for, I have a question for Shontrell. Is there, this wouldn't affect the business operating, but is there any way in the rezoning, instead of making it B-three moving forward, meaning if, like if Ms. Gray sold it, the next person, it'd still be B-three? Is there any way to, to do a special exception?
Well, I did make that recommendation, because as you know, that if the business ceased to exist after six months, that would revert back. I did make that recommendation that it would if they ceased to exist, but they did not move forward on that exception.
At the planning and zoning meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Gotcha.
But that wouldn't affect their, their operation.
It wouldn't affect the business at all, no. Only if it ceased to exist would the BA were to revert back to a B-two. But we did not make that recommendation, or we made that recommendation, but they didn't act upon it. The commission did not.
Okay. But that's something we can still do.
Yes, you can still do that.
Well, the alcohol permit will take care of itself. B-three, it comes down to the hours of operation, and Louisiana allows to two AM, so B-three is the more appropriate.
That's, that's the only thing is I, I just don't like, I like personally having the special exception, which I know you do too, if you recommended it, so that if, if this business, if they sell it in the future, or it ceases to exist for whatever reason, then whatever comes in, they could stay open to two AM.
Correct.
Without coming before us and.
Or planning and zoning.
Yeah, yeah, exactly. So that's, that's just my recommendation. That's all. This is my comment.
Okay.
It doesn't affect the current business whatsoever. It's just in the future, any future business that goes there.
So I don't know. Do we, um, will we need a, I guess it would be, this is my first hearing of this, at this time, so there, there could be a motion, I guess, Tommy? Is that what we, is that what we hear?
To be honest, I'm not, I'm not exactly sure. You may have to deny it and go back to planning and zoning for action.
What exactly you wanting, what exactly you saying? And I mean, if.
He just doesn't want it to have that.
The next person who will come in would have to reapply again, is what you're saying?
Let's just, let's look at that and see if the next hearing, if we can verbally amend it.
By motion, just amend it?
Yeah. To be B-two special exception as a B-two.
Well, it can't go to B-two. So what the motion should be?
Oh, yes.
Is that if the business of Gray Lou Ventures ceases to exist, then it revert back. But right now, it has to stand as a B-three with BA.
Well, doesn't it automatically convert back since it hasn't been voted on by the commission? Wouldn't it? Or not?
No.
It sound like that's what you just said.
No.
If they cease to exist.
If the business closes its doors, if it goes to the tax commission and says, we will no longer operate as Gray Lou Ventures are on its lounge/restaurant, we're closing our doors, that moment that they close their doors, then the reversion will go back to a B-two. The B-three will no longer be there, and neither will the BA. But right now, as it stands, for it to operate in its current capacity, it has to be zone B-three with BA. What Attorney Harrington is asking is that if it ceases to exist, that current zoning of B-three BA will revert back to a B-two, only if they cease to exist, is what he's asking to amend to.
Yeah, that's what I was trying to get to understand. Okay.
But if it has to go back to planning, zoning, and all, no, I'm not, I'm just seeing if we can.
I can look at it.
Yeah.
And at this particular location, other than Willie Snally, I think is the closest resident to it, it's really in a business district.
Correct.
B-three won't, wouldn't be as impactful, so.
Okay. So I guess we'll just take it under consideration. Again, it's only being introduced today, is what I hear. Yeah. Okay. All right. Next item on the agenda is for introduction as well, and it's ordinance number eighteen of two thousand twenty-three. Read by Councilman PT.
Thank you, Mayor. Ordinance number zero-one-eight, ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with Kane River National Heritage Area whereby the City of Natchitoches will provide employees to the Kane River National Heritage Area in exchange for the services and benefits that the city receives from the operations of the Kane River National Heritage Area. And this is for introduction.
Okay. All right. This is being introduced to us today. We do have Ms. Rebecca Blankenbaker, who's here with us. She's the executive director of the National Kane River National Heritage Area. Do you want to lead off with some comments, Rebecca?
Thank you, Mayor. As the mayor mentioned, my name is Rebecca Blankenbaker. I'm the executive director of Kane River National Heritage Area, and I'm here to speak on behalf of this ordinance. Since two thousand and six, we have had a partnership with the City of Natchitoches whereby they provide us our professional personnel services and benefit packages, which allows us to compete competitively as a nonprofit organization and provide a job and a salary benefit package that is competitive with other organizations. And I just want to say thank you to the city council, the mayor, and all of the staff of the City of Natchitoches. We work very closely with each and every department, and it is a great partnership. Some of our most recent partnership projects that we've worked on on behalf of the City of Natchitoches include the Texas and Pacific Depot Rehabilitation Project, the comprehensive outdoor recreation plan that we are currently working on with the National Park Service, the Natchitoches and Bloom Public Art Sculpture Project that is being unveiled this week, as a matter of fact, and countless other smaller projects like community cleanups and grant programs that benefit commercial and private buildings within the City of Natchitoches and the historic district in particular. I'm happy to answer any questions that you all have.
And counsel, just a note, I think you see a list of ways that Kane River National Heritage Area and the city have partnered over the years, just to say that publicly for us. But yeah, any questions for Rebecca?
Just a comment that this has been a tremendous partnership over the years, and Cynthia Sutton would surely be proud of you and your group, so.
Thank you. Thank you all. I really do need to express my appreciation on behalf of all of the staff and the board of directors. We are a nonprofit organization, and we could not do it without the City of Natchitoches and their support. From, we feel it from every level, from the council to the mayor and his office and all of the department heads and the staff. You've got a phenomenal person, a city personnel, and it's just, it's just a joy to work with each of the city. Thank you.
You're doing a great job throughout the city. You really, really are.
Thank you.
Looking forward to a continued partnership, Rebecca. And public comment will be allowed at our next meeting on the twenty-seventh. All right. Next item on the agenda is ordinance number nineteen of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman at large Smith.
This is resolution number nineteen of two thousand twenty-three. It's a resolution adopting the Natchitoches Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan of twenty, of two thousand twenty-three. Whereas, the City of Natchitoches recognizes the threat that Natchitoches. The wrong one?
Yes.
Here you go. Okay, mine's a differ.
Yeah, that's resolution, and this is ordinance number one. I said you said.
Bam. Nothing like paper. This is ordinance number nineteen of two thousand twenty-three, which is an ordinance authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreement with the Ben Johnson Educational Center whereby the City of Natchitoches will provide employees to the Ben Johnson Educational Center in exchange for the services and benefits that the city receives from the operation of the Ben Johnson Education, Educational Center. Is this for introduction?
Yes.
And let's see what else is in here. Whereas, the Ben Johnson, Ben Johnson Education Center, sometimes referred to as the BJEC, is not-for-profit corporation with a five-oh-one C-three status with a mission to build the community in the City of Natchitoches and give access to social and economic success to all of the residents of the City of Natchitoches. Whereas, BJEC is authorized to enter into a cooperative endeavor agreements with the City of Natchitoches. And whereas, the BJEC is a SNAP education training provider and offers, offers training to SNAP recipients, providing them a portal of state assistance through workforce development training, has projects and programs which include opportunities to gain skill, training, work, and on-the-job training. That increase the ability of residents to obtain employment. And these projects and programs benefit the city through the development of a skilled workforce, which increases economic development. And this is for introduction only.
All right. And we do have Ms. Claire Primus here, who is, should I say, executive director of the Ben D. Johnson Center? You can give us your title officially. But there is a list as well with the Kane River National Heritage Area. There's a list about the Ben D. Johnson Educational Center that we provided to the council members in terms of the impact and some of the things that are happening already. Just please state your first and last name and give.
Claire Primus. I am president and founder of the Ben Johnson Educational Center. And we are a nonprofit, a five-oh-one C-three, and the hope is that we can retain and build our organization through this alliance and cooperative endeavor with the city to grow our organization as well as the community.
We know, of course, a lot of, can you speak to some of the workforce, which is really a major, that's what I hear, leaders across Louisiana talk about a lot, but there's some efforts that you all have been working on for some time, I think, that maybe everybody does, is not aware of some of those initiatives.
So we are, we have partnered with SNAP ENT to provide educational and workforce opportunities to Northwestern, hopefully with the city more, being, we would like to be more of a workforce arm for the city in terms of training. The hospital, pretty much organizations, hopefully alliance more. We have an industrial training certification where we train people and OSHA training, also serve safe training. So across the board, we want to reduce the unemployment in Natchitoches through our initiatives. And this would allow us an opportunity to bring on more staff, be more competitive in the workplace.
Okay. Counsel, I don't know if you have any questions or comments for Ms. Primus?
This could end up being a tremendous agreement between the city and what Claire's doing at Ben Johnson. It's much needed for workforce development, and to be able to support that is, is going to be a good thing.
Thank you.
Of course, the workforce piece is really, really important, but there are some other initiatives, I think, that are noteworthy. One of them now, your expungement program, someone was telling me about, about that on today.
On Tuesday, we had an expungement program, and it was in collaboration with Southern's Law School. And we were able to see over sixty-three people that came through our program. And just think about, you know, changing lives of people where you can get your records expunged and go back into the work field. What our primary goal is, is to remove barriers that would prevent people from gainful employment. And so if you have a record, you can't work in a hospital. You can't even do healthcare because you have a record. And some of these people were ten years out, and they, they're living their lives, but because of this one or two incidents, they cannot get gainful employment. So to be able to do programs like this is, is rewarding, not only for me, not only for the center, but it speaks a lot for the City of Natchitoches where we are trying to remove barriers and let, have people live their best lives.
Doing some wonderful things, actually. Really, really wonderful things.
Thank you, Betty.
For the community.
Thanks.
Changing lives, changing lives.
We're trying.
Yep. Again, I heard about the, the success of your first expungement round and just unbelievable work, so.
Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, guys.
All right. Now, if there are any questions that happen, counsel, we certainly can connect you to Ms. Claire, and we can handle some questions as well, okay? But again, that's just for introduction and be an opportunity for the public to have questions and comments at our next meeting as well. All right.
Oh, I found it on my computer.
Okay. Next, we just, we have resolution number nineteen of two thousand twenty-three. That's Councilwoman Washington, Eli.
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number zero-one-nine of two thousand twenty-three. A resolution appointing the Natchitoches Parish Hazard Mitigation Plan of two thousand and twenty-three. And I'm gonna get, is this for Edley?
Yeah. Ed, Ed may have some additional, I think you said it on some of the meetings.
Okay. I'm gonna get him to explain a little bit more in detail what it is instead of me reading it.
Okay. This is primarily something that was handled through the Natchitoches Parish Sheriff's Office. Mary Jones and Lamar Gasky kind of spearheaded this. But if you're gonna receive federal funds after a disaster of different kinds, hurricane, ice storm, even wildfire, you have to have a hazard mitigation plan in place, and this is it, it's pretty big, in order to receive federal funds. And this covers the entire parish and the different communities within the parish. So all, all the different communities and the parish will be adopting the same thing. But we have to have this in place if we're gonna receive federal funds due to a natural disaster. Like I said, they primarily put it in place, but we had to provide a lot of information about city properties and things like that, and I worked with them to do that. So as a result, and a lot of work, a lot of time, the hazard mitigation plan is complete, and we just need the city council to pass the resolution adopting the mitigation plan.
So I moved it out, resolution number zero-one-nine of two thousand twenty-three.
Second.
Motion made and seconded. This is something that happens annually, correct?
This is the first one that I have brought to the city council. If it has been done before me, I'm not sure about it, but I, I don't know the history of it. But I know now, in order to get federal funds, you do have to have this in place and adopted.
Comments or questions, counsel? About the hazard mitigation plan?
No, sir.
Public comments or questions?
So I moved to adopt Resolution Number 019 of 2023.
Second.
Motion made in second, and this is something that happens annually, correct?
This is the first one that I have brought to the City Council. If it has been done before me, I'm not sure about it. But I, I don't know the history of it. But I know now, in order to get federal funds, you do have to have this in place and adopted.
Comments or questions, Counsel? About the hazard mitigation plan?
No, sir.
Public comments or questions? Okay, seeing now, Mrs. Stacy, roll card vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries. Next item, we have a resolution Number 20 of 2023, read by Councilman Harrington.
This is Resolution 20 of 2023. It's a resolution approving and accepting the contract for exemption of ad valorem taxes for Alliance Compressors LLC and authorizing the mayor of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, Ronnie Williams Jr., to draft and execute a letter or any other instrument necessary to convey the acceptance and approval of the City of Natchitoches to the exemption. And whereas the City of Natchitoches was provided with notice of the tax exemption application pursuant to the rules of the Board of Commerce and Industry effective August 20, 2018. Whereas further, the City Council, the City of Natchitoches, has been made aware of the significant capital investment that Alliance has made through equipment acquisition for its plant located in the City of Natchitoches, as well as the related retention of existing jobs and possibility of new jobs. And whereas further, if the application is approved by Louisiana Economic Development, property taxes imposed by the City of Natchitoches would be abated. And whereas further, the City Council of the City of Natchitoches, Louisiana, having reviewed the incentive plan being offered by the state and having been made aware of the equipment acquisition made by Alliance, desires to cooperate with the state in order to provide the most benefit possible under the incentive plan being offered to Alliance. And whereas the City Council of the City of Natchitoches is of the, of the opinion the equipment acquisition will be beneficial to the City of Natchitoches in a number of ways, including increasing the future property tax basis, retention of existing jobs, increasing new job opportunities, including construction jobs and permanent manufacturing jobs. And whereas further, the mayor of the City of Natchitoches and the City Council of the City of Natchitoches desire to express their approval of the application made by Alliance and further commit to take the action necessary to express their approval and acceptance of the application made by Alliance. I moved, I moved to adopt Resolution 20 of 2023.
Second.
Motion made in second. We do have Mr. Brian Brock here. And Mr. Brock, want you to introduce yourself. I don't know if correct titles, plant manager?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
All right, so Brian Brock, Alliance Compressors Plant Manager. I've got a couple of slides I wanted to walk you guys through today just to talk a little bit about Alliance and a little bit about the investment that we're going to be making in that facility. Go ahead and go to the next slide, sir. All right, so our Alliance Compressors has been around here for 25 years now. Think about that. That's a pretty impactful length of time for a business to be in, in, in this area. We've made 32 million compressors along the way. That's a lot of compressors going in air conditioners in people's backyards, right? Keeping people cool, keeping, keeping your refrigerators cold, keeping hospitals healthy, et cetera. We employ 660 employees currently. We have a full assembly manufacturing process as well as scroll proprietary machining process. And that scroll proprietary machining process is actually a really cool thing. It has, we hold tolerances in that machining department to less than one micron. Human hair, on average, is about 25 microns. So think about that for a minute. It's extremely technical what we do in that business. We make about 8,000 compressors per day currently. We have two 10-hour shifts four days a week in our assembly operation. And I'm happy to say, last year, we actually added a shift in our scroll machining department. We added about 51 jobs. We went from a two 10-hour shift structure to a three eight-hour shift structure five days a week last year. We needed some extra capacity for scroll machining. So we added some folks and are continuing to push that process. Go ahead. So a little bit about Alliance's employees. Again, we have 660 employees. 80% of those employees reside in Natchitoches proper or the parish of. So they're homegrown folks. We have a $38 million annual wage package. Most of that money is spent in our restaurants or gas stations, our local businesses. We did a, an interesting thing last January. We were able to give our employees a 14% gross wage increase in their hourly wages. That's the, that's the largest raise we've given our team in the history of that factory. We also increased our temporary starting wages by $4 per hour. We're investing in our people. We want folks to want to be there. We want to make sure we support them because they certainly have supported us in the last few years. We've got, you know, a few other amenities, full-service cafeterias, climate control. We keep it about 72 degrees year-round. We prefer, prefer to promote from within. We like to grow our own folks. We have internships for skilled maintenance positions. We also have a tuition reimbursement program. Alliance is also a big part of the community. We donated $100,000 to help get the Boys and Girls Club back off, off the ground. Title, title sponsor of Park Natchitoches for the last four or five years. A-plus coalition, hundreds of backpack donations every year at the beginning of the school year. We, we do a couple of drives for that and hand those out to local entities. Big partner with Northwestern State University, Jazz Fest sponsor, local school endeavors. We, you know, one of the things that we like to do is our employees come to us, hey, my son or my daughter has a basketball team or travel ball team, and they need some help with some uniforms or some buying some lunch. So we make sure we try to support that as much as we possibly can. We are a partner of excellence with Natchitoches Regional Medical, Medical Center as well. Go ahead. So I'm not going to go through all of this, but there's been a lot of milestones in our business over the last 25 years on that journey to make those 32 million compressors. And I'll tell you, we, we finally ran out of, we ran out of room. We hit a wall. So we have to add a new assembly line to our business. If you talk to any of our employees in the last five or six years, they're tired. They've worked five and six-day weeks, 50 and 60 and 70-hour weeks trying to take care of our customers in this crazy, crazy business that we've been in. So we finally have made a decision to make an investment in our factory. We're going to spend $40 million in Natchitoches, Louisiana. Think about that for a minute. Little tiny Natchitoches, Louisiana, that's a big deal, right? I am extremely proud of that. And I think most of us in this room are very, very proud of that. So that brings me to the next, the next slide here. Just talk about line three. We're gonna, it, it's called the next generation assembly line. If you've been in our factory, you've seen our old lines one and two. Lot of manual operations, a lot of pick and place kind of thing. This new line is going to be a little different. It's going to be mimicking an assembly line that you might see in an automotive world. You see the truck come down the assembly line, the white door shows up, the red seat shows up, et cetera, et cetera. You're able to overcome a lot of changeovers and product proliferation with that process. Our process today, when you have to put the red door on the truck, you have to take the white truck off the line, empty all that raw product, move things around, it's wasteful. This new process is going to overcome some of that. Lot of new equipment, facility changes, a lot of monuments. If you've been by the factory in the last few months, you see some of the construction that's taking place up by the bypass. That's just a small piece of it. We're actually turning that end of the building into a full-service receiving dock. That way, product can flow through the factory the right way. Next step is we've got to start knocking down brick walls inside the plant. We've got to move some raw parts around. It's, it's a, there's a lot of work going on. So in the next few months, we're going to be extremely busy as we work through this process. But it's going to add 78 new jobs with an average salary of $40,000 a year. Pretty significant, that's good stuff, right? So the last thing I wanted to talk about is the ITE itself. Go ahead. So on the left is ITE Number 507, which is what this resolution is referring to. So the orange bar was our 2022 tax bill for the City of Alliance, City, City of Natchitoches from Alliance Compressors. Those monies don't go away. They get bigger with this abatement, right? So you're going to get, on average, another $17,000 per year with this abatement process. What we're asking for is an 80% exemption, which is, which is around $69,000 on average per year for the life of the abatement, right? And that kind of goes up and down over the, over the period of time. But what does that do for us as an alliance? It helps us to invest in our people, continuing to do that. We've done a lot of that, we want to do more. It helps us to continue to invest in our factory and grow that business. And it makes us a lot more stable going down the road, right? So with that, I would like to, I'd open it up to any questions that anybody might have. And I certainly appreciate your support.
I'll make it great.
Questions, Counsel?
It's impactful. Great park.
I would like to think it's like a give-and-take relationship, and we most definitely don't want to see you guys leave the city, so we gotta, gotta work with you.
Same, same here, thank you very much. All right.
And again, we, we were impressed. Councilman Nielsen, we were, we happened to be, when this was first presented, with the, you know, to see the impact of various things that you all are doing in the community, Boys and Girls Club and all these other initiatives. So really impressive. I mean, I, I think it's certainly worth noting that we get more from this in terms of the, the full view from the city than we're, than we're, you might say, giving up, right? Or through abatement. So, yeah, the payroll and just the, the addition that you said earlier, the 70-plus jobs is, is really, really major for our economy. $40 million investment, that's, that's really big, so. We're excited about it.
Me too.
Yep. I, I don't know if there are any public comments or questions? Since this is something we'll be voting on soon?
It's 10 years, yes, ma'am.
The question was, how long is the abatement for? Just for the record, and 10-year period. Go ahead. All right.
Glad you're staying.
So we just did, we actually raised our...
I'm sorry, sir, I'm sorry, what was that question? So the question is...
So we do a market...
We're raising the wages.
Yeah, we actually do a market study of local industry every year. And we do, we base our wage increases off of that study. And we are very competitive with Boise and Marko and some of those other local industries. Understand.
Yep. Yep. Okay, we do have another question. Look, I'm gonna need you to come to the, to the podium.
Thank you, Mayor.
Yep.
Call size. I'd like to say this to line compressors. I go to ZB B every morning, and I hear about the industry opened up a new line. And, and, and I asked, I said, what kind of new line? Say they're going to add more workers, and they're going to do this, they're going to do this. And the workers at line compressors are so enthused by opening up this new line. I'm like, you think they're hiding? But I ain't looking for no job. But the thing of it is, is how the Alliance came here and gave people a new life on living, a new spectrum and everything else. And I, I, I'm gonna be honest with you, I'm surprised, not surprised, but I'm overwhelmed by the people that have positive things to say about line compressor. And they admin, they atmosphere here in Natchitoches, they journey here in Natchitoches, and the things that they have accomplished here. And they have given a lot of people jobs, and they gave a lot of people great hope. And let the trace say amen.
Thank you, Mr. Hayes.
Down here.
And thank you again, Mr. Brock, for that presentation and for answering those questions. All right, Counsel, I don't think you have anything else at this point. All right, Mrs. Stacy, roll card vote.
Eli?
Yes.
Nelson?
Yes.
Smith?
Yes.
Harrington?
Yes.
PT?
Yes.
All right, that motion carries also. All right, we are finished with the agenda. Just a couple announcements, I think, Steve. Always encouraging people to download the Go Natchitoches app. Events going on in Natchitoches, that's how you know what's going on. Regroup for emergency messages and road closures and things of that nature. We do have the Pub Crawl. It's taking place on, this coming Saturday from 4:00 to 10:00 p.m. in historic Natchitoches. I know this is one of the Chamber's signature events throughout the year, and really, really good event. So it says you can register at crawlthebricks.com. Laura, since you happen to be here tonight, is that, does this publication, does this announcement do it what it needs to? Does it do justice? Everything's good?
It does justice, it's an amazing time. It contributes about $360,000 to our downtown businesses. We have vendors from outside of the downtown area coming to join us on the bricks. And it is also a fundraiser for the Chamber of the Natchitoches Professionals, an opportunity for us to attract more 20, 21, 24-year-olds, which we need more of. So appreciate your support, everybody, come out and make your contribution.
Right, thanks for adding that information.
I'm 22, so I'm a little...
All right, Steve, I think there's just a couple more. The Steel Magnolia Run is also this Saturday. I don't see a time on the flyer. It starts at 8:00 a.m. Thanks, thanks a lot. Starts at 8:00 a.m.? I'm sorry, say that again?
Registration will...
Registration at 7:00, and the run starts at?
8:00.
8:00, all right, good.
You running me?
I'll be there. All right. Yeah, and Steve is pulling up another one. As he's doing that, just a reminder, Bike Sunday, which we're doing monthly, monthly, excuse me, is this Sunday. We always start at the Natchitoches Parish, I'm sorry, the Watson Library on University Parkway. So the Watson Library on University Parkway at 2:30. It's a three-mile ride. We, we've kept the same route, going down Texas, I'm sorry, going down MLK, then Texas, then front, then getting back to university. So normally, we have good weather. So hopefully, we'll have more individuals to join this coming Sunday. Again, the third Sunday of each month. Tomorrow, at the Event Center, from 9:00 to 10:00 a.m., we have Congressman Mike Johnson, who is a congressman for our area in DC. He's doing a town hall again at the Event Center. So hopefully, people can make that, can attend, and see what is on the agenda in terms of DC, right? Those are the announcements that we have. So at this time, Counsel, will hear motion to adjourn?
Mayor, I make a motion that we adjourn.
Second.
All right, motion has been made and seconded to adjourn. All in favor?
Aye.
Meeting is adjourned.